Good evening, everyone. I hope you can hear me. That's better. I can hear myself now. Good afternoon and welcome to one of the most alluring sessions on this year's programme, looking at Abu Dhabi United Group and Manchester City Council's plans for East Manchester. I'm Damian Wild and I'm editor of EG. And over the next 45 minutes or so, I'll be asking some questions to our panelists, and I hope you will too, and you'll have an opportunity for that shortly. So we're going to be talking about plans to turn it into a world-leading sport, leisure and entertainment community. And much has been achieved over the last decade and a half since the 2002 Commonwealth Games, and especially over the last 10 years through that partnership, realising a vision that was first set in place and in train in the 1990s. It's not all about football, it's not all about cycling or squash for that matter. Last week, and I'm sure we'll talk about this, the Rugby Football League announced it would be relocating to the Etihad campus as well. But I'll let our panel explain the vision for the campus and to take your questions as well. So on my left is, of course, Sir Richard Lees, leader of Manchester City Council, and on my right Marty Edelman, board member of the City Football Group and strategic adviser to ADUG. So, Sir Richard, let's go back to that original vision. When was it set out? What was it? And what sort of percentage has been realised so far?
I'm going to go back quite a long way to start with, really, because I think now it's hard to remember what was on the Etihad campus before it became the Etihad campus, before it became the Commonwealth Games. And where the stadium now is was a coal mine. Just down the road was a steelworks. Across the road was a power station. There was a gas works. Where City's training facility is, the north end of it was, it was actually a factory that used to turn East Manchester, Manchester City blew quite regularly, but that was because of the chemicals it was spewing out rather than anything else. So Clayton Anline was on that site. This really was the industrial centre of Manchester. And there's a period in the late 70s, early 80s, within only two or three years, out of 110,000 manufacturing jobs in East Manchester, 70% of them disappeared, almost disappeared overnight. And what that left was enormous amounts of empty space, really. And if you go back to the early 80s, all of them were badged as regeneration sites, they're all grassed over with bollards around them, and they stayed like that for a very long, long period of time. We saw in the mid-1990s, sport in general, the Commonwealth Games as being the sort of catalyst we needed to regenerate East Manchester and repopulate East Manchester. And what was then Sports City was the heart of that. And that worked to a larger extent, because for an area that had really had the heart knocked out of it, once we started work on the stadium, on the other things around there, it started to put value back into the area immediately. When we start bringing visitors to the area, again, for people who live in the area, think this is an area that's got, people are coming to where we live, this is an area that's got value. And that make it quite clear that the intention of the regeneration of East Manchester was always that we would build with and on the existing communities, because there was lots and lots of space for other people. There was room to triple the population of East Manchester and improve conditions for the people who were already living there. So a real aim, a real aim there. So now, there are a few bits that started off, that clearly the Veletri was the first part, built as part of the Olympic bid, actually. It wasn't built for the Commonwealth Games, it was built as part of the second Olympic bid. And then the rest of Sports City came with the Commonwealth Games. And I think we were really fortunate that we ended up with Manchester City as being the tenant for the City of Manchester Stadium, as it was then, because that wasn't our first choice, actually. So we were really-
What was, remind us?
Well, the first choice was for the FA to play some of the national games there, cup semi-finals and so on, which would have been sufficient to have funded the stadium. The FA decided to put all their eggs into the Wembley basket, and actually, which I think has proved to be a bit of a mistake for them, because I think for international games it worked a lot better when they were touring the country, rather than in a fairly inaccessible part of North London anyway. But their mistake was really our good fortune, although that good fortune really came to the fore a few years later, in 2008, when Abu Dhabi United Group became the owners of Manchester City Football Club. And Abu Dhabi United Group really made three pledges towards the council and to the city. The first one was, and this is very important to myself and Howard Bernstein, was to create a world-class football team. We would probably stop at that, actually, but, and, well, I suppose you could have some debate about whether we succeeded in doing that, but-
Really, thanks.
No. Given that, I think even, of course, Gary Neville here early today, and I think even he now acknowledges that we've got a world-class football team, so we've got that bit. The second bit was, Manchester City was always very strong on its community side, its commitment to community and building community, and there was a really strong pledge to maintain that. Well, done better than maintain that. They've grown the community involvement, they've grown the community side of the club. And the third part was to contribute to the regeneration of East Manchester. We've always seen, always saw the regeneration of East Manchester as being at least a 20-year project, probably the impact of, well, both recession and a reduction in central government support that came post 2010, probably now makes it a 30-year project rather than a 20-year project. But we always saw it as a long-term project. But if you look at what's happened already in East Manchester and around the Etihad campus, the club's training facility is clearly world-leading. There is nothing like it anywhere else in the world. We've built a new high school adjacent to there, the East Manchester Academy. There's a new community leisure centre, so alongside these elite athlete facilities, there are also facilities for the local community there. We started part of that science base with the Institute of Sports Health and Performance on the site. And of course, again, I think through a separate joint venture between the City Council and ADUG, through Manchester Life, that we are, I think, starting at the Ancot's end of East Manchester, we are doing something I've been talking about over the last two days. We're not just providing homes, we're building a new place as well. And actually, Marty chairs Manchester Life alongside his other roles. And we're building a new place, and effectively, we're starting to drive an improvement in quality and standards, because the Manchester Life stuff actually exceeds the Manchester quality standards, it's setting new expectations around that. I think Marty's going to talk about some of the things that are going to be happening on the Etihad campus in the immediate future. As you said, Rugby League are going to make their new home based on the, what's the Regional Athletics Arena at the, in the Etihad campus. But I think we now see a basis for how we're going to take the regeneration of East Manchester forward, very much based on sport and leisure around the Etihad Stadium, but with more commercial and residential opportunities, going all the way through Haltown, along the MetroLink lines into Ancot's and into the, into the city centre. And I think the plans that we've had for this being a genuine mixed-use neighbourhood, where it's homes and jobs, we can now see realistically over the next five to 10 years, actually, coming to fruition. And we see now there is real momentum in the development of that area.
Okay, thank you. And Marty, when you, you know, when the group came to look at this opportunity, you were buying a football club, weren't you, not into a 20-, 30-year regeneration plan, presumably?
Presumably. But first, let me say that I appreciate the opportunity to be part of something alluring, which I haven't had for many, many years. So I'm grateful to be here. So when we first came to Manchester, actually, the first night I was in Manchester, I got to have dinner with Sir Howard and Sir Richard, and we definitely were just buying a football team. And it was a football team that had experienced a number of challenges, and we were trying to think about what we really wanted to do, was it just a football team? And at that dinner, I really got to understand Manchester, and I got to understand Manchester's ambitions, and how Manchester had really reclaimed itself. And it occurred to us that we really needed to give a lot more thought to what we were doing. And that thought culminated in a letter Sheikh Mansour wrote, actually, to Manchester, which expressed our ambitions. And that dinner caused us to have, and Howard participated in a number of these, a number of sort of think-tank sessions, in which we looked at all of the land around the stadium, and we looked at what we really should do if we wanted to create not just a football team, but contribute to the regeneration of the area, and to build something that was both bold and inspiring, because you can actually do one or the other, it's harder to do both. And what we came out with from these sessions ended up as City Football Academy, in which we purchased about 90 acres around the stadium, some very quietly, no one knew about it, but of course, at the end, we had a lovely time trying to buy the remaining parcels. One very fervent Man United supporter actually sold quarter-inch condominium units in his land to frustrate our ability to buy them, but we managed to work it out with him. So we ended up-
Did you have to buy many quarter-inches individually, or was there another solution?
No, there was another solution. Another solution. His wife was very helpful, actually. We, when we envisioned City Football Academy, we envisioned it being impactful. And so we went and visited 37 different training facilities and operations around the world, and either amended or pilfered some of the best ideas we had. And any of you who have gone to see it, I think, will see that we've created really a world-class environment. And in the process, had to clean up about 40 acres of the toxic material that Sir Richard described. So our view was, okay, so now we had a team, and obviously committed to the team being successful. We had a world-class training facility. We were building a world-class academy for youth, because that was very important to us. And now we had all of the rest of the, almost 200 acres that surround the stadium, and we formed a joint venture with the city. And as opposed to doing what sometimes you tend to do, is just do something, we decided again to study it. And we've studied it and experimented with different ideas during the entire 10 years, and it's really in the last two years that, with the help of the City Council, we've come to the conclusion that what we need is probably the finest urban sports campus in the world. It could be a place where we can convene institutes of sports with the national bodies of England and maybe other countries. Manchester Metropolitan University is going to establish an institute of sport for undergraduate and graduate students, which will be located on the campus, including dormitories. We're looking at a number of leisure activities. Our view is that we want to make this a reflection of the way the world's changing, where the people that govern sport govern it not just for the sport itself, but for the business and culture of the sport. And so we have some very ambitious plans that Sir Richard and the City Council have been very helpful with. We're looking at a leisure component in addition to an educational component. The university is going to reach out to other universities around the world that have institutes of sport, and think about sort of a central think-tank, which will allow us then to build some hotel there. And the idea is, as we did with the City Football Academy, 80% of the money we spent there, we spent with contractors in the North West, probably 60% of the workers were from the greater metropolitan area. We had training programmes to help people in East, in East London, East Manchester, get work in those facilities. And that was part of Sheikh Mansour and Howdou Mubarak, our chairman's, concept that we needed not just to be remote and do nice things for the community, but we really had to participate and integrate into the community. And that's been one of the key goals that we've had. And I would say that having been fortunate enough to be active in almost all the major cities in the world, there is no city that's a better host for innovation than the city of Manchester.
Okay, I do want to focus on the future and what's coming, but just to dwell on the past very briefly, that dinner, so as the starter is served, you're buying a football team.
Right.
By dessert, you've got an ambition to realise a 200-acre civic vision. What did they say?
It was a good dinner.
Yeah. Perhaps you should serve some more of that.
Well, when you finish listening to the two of them, you realise that Manchester became literally the university capital of England, the tech capital of England, the healthcare of Northern England, the healthcare capital of Northern England. The BBC is there, law firms are now locating back offices there. And the only thing they couldn't convince me was that the weather was good, but it doesn't seem to matter. So actually, I brought the deputy mayor of New York City to visit one time, and she stayed overnight, and I met her in the morning, and she, it was, I think, January. And she said, "Seriously, you love this place?" And I said, "Wait." She met, she met Nancy Rothwell at the Manchester University, she met Sir Richard, she met Sir Howard, we had lunch, she saw a number of the different businesses, and when she left, she said, "Okay, I get it." And that's, I think, the way everybody feels who comes to Manchester and understands the vibrancy of the governmental support for private enterprise.
Okay. Great dinner, by the sound of it. But as you left and as it's evolved since, it wasn't a fully realised vision that you presented there, I presume? And how has it evolved since? How has it been ratcheted up to be something that's truly transformational?
Look, the way that we do long-term planning in Manchester, and have done it for a long, long time, is that we do start off with a very clear vision for an area, and everything else will change, but the vision stays the same. And that goes right back to when we started the regeneration of Hume, that we always have that vision. This is the thing you refer back to. So we have a real vision about the sort of place we want East Manchester to be. I think it's a vision that people who live in East Manchester share. Now, clearly, we've had a big recession in the, in the middle of this, we've had changes of government, but we still have that long-term, long-term vision. I think what Marty was describing in the process we've been going through over the last couple of years is, how do we take that vision forward in the circumstances that we now find ourselves in? And what he's described as creating this world-leading sporting campus at the heart of, it's certainly the heart of the Etihad campus, but actually, the heart of East Manchester, because you're talking about something that is geographically located, slap-bang in the middle of East Manchester. That is, I think, a plan now for the area that is wholly consistent with what we wanted to do 20 years ago. In some respects, it's completely different, but because circumstances have changed, but it is still true to that vision. And we will use that all the way through to test what we're, what we're doing. It's always got to be a test of that, what are we trying to do? What sort of place are we trying to create? How do the people who live in this area feel about what we're doing? We'll do that consistently. It's about building with communities, not doing things to communities.
Okay. And you talked about the leisure offer that may be coming down the track, Marty. Can you give us an insight into that and what it might look like?
Well, that's going to be last, in a way, because leisure has to have activities that attract people, and we need to have more activity on the wider campus itself in order to be able to sustain the leisure activities. But whether it be cinema or some nightlife, my original vision, which I think I talked to Howard about the second day I was there, which was to build the largest casino in Northern England on the campus, didn't last very long. So we've been exploring other alternatives. But I think what's important is, we're going to have young people because of the university. And that, that's an energy source. So you've got to look at what young people are doing. You've got to look at sort of the we-work, we-live model, and see whether the way we're thinking about residential communities is different. And we've done that at Manchester Life, and I think we need to do it in the area between Etihad and Ancot's. And so I think what you'll see is that there'll be sort of the same kind of activity that you expect in city centre in a downtown city. I think we'll be able to rec, you know, to actually reprise that in the campus, because we'll have enough people around it who will want to actually live there, work there, and have their leisure there. And that means hotels, restaurants, innovation centres, there's an innovation project going into New Islington now. And I think you're going to see, because of the excellent transportation that Manchester has, that people are going to be very comfortable moving back and forth at night, which is what we want.
So not many cars, many more rental homes than you might see in comparable developments?
Yes, yes. And not many cars, right? That's, that's the key, because cars take up space as well as all the other things that they do, their congestion, developers.
Well, I think we ought to talk about the quality of the public transport links anyway, and you've clearly got MetroLink going through the area. The area we're talking about, there is nowhere that's more than 10 minutes' walk from a MetroLink stop. Actually, it's only 20-minute walk from the stadium to Piccadilly Station, anyway. And what we're already seeing in terms of taking the vision forward, is this is, I suppose, going at a corridor from both ends. We see coming out of the city centre, starting with Ancot's, that we see residential development there, we see commercial development, there are jobs being created in that area, we see artistic, cultural activity there, the New Hope Mill Theatre and the stuff of, the art galleries within there. There's a whole range of activity that's coming out to meet the Etihad campus. And I think an area that's almost seen cut off from the city centre and everything that goes on there is increasingly becoming joined up. And it's not the city centre, it's not an extension of the city centre, these are neighbourhoods that will have their own characteristics, but they are neighbourhoods that are becoming very much, once again, part of the life of the city.
Okay. And in terms of the housing that you envisioned there, how might that be, what might be the components that go in there?
Well, I think, again, we've clearly set out that the closer you are to the city centre, the higher the density that we would expect, that as we move out, the density will become lower, apart from key locations, perhaps around the stadium itself, where we would still expect to see some higher density. A lot of choices there, and the choices, not all apartments are houses, certainly family housing. We already find it in the stuff we're doing in, through Manchester Life, we've got families moving into accommodation there. A mix, not just all for rent, that we would expect a mix. And again, the stuff we've been doing together at Murray Mill, again, at the beginning of Ancot's, by and large, all the, all the one-bed flats there for sale have been sold, it's auto-owner occupiers, and it's pretty much all first-time buyers as well. This is an offer that we want to make sure that we end up with mixed communities in there. Affordable housing, yeah, this is not going to be any sort of ghetto at all, that we want a real mix of population within the area. But the thing is, that within East Manchester, there is the scale to be able to do everything. And if there's scale to do everything, well, it's Manchester, so we will do everything.
So we've had, in connection with sort of the announcement of the Rugby League and the University Institute of Sport, we've had more phone calls from companies who are interested in locating on the Etihad campus from out of Manchester than we had in the eight years before. So companies from London, we have one from South Africa, a couple from the States, people I know have called. It's, it's a change in perspective about the potential for literally using sport as the trigger for a widespread regeneration of what happens in an area. And I think it's quite unique. I mean, I see from some of the panels that other, other cities are looking at it, and they should, because sport is one of the kind of universal attraction centres for every community, and if you actually use it and don't get confined by it. And we're, one of the great things about being an amateur is you're not confined. So I always remember the story about why you shouldn't get too lost in having experience and skill, because we have to remember that incredibly skilled, talented people designed the Titanic, and Noah did the ark. So, you know, there's a lesson there for everybody who starts a project even without a lot of history.
So, we've been talking a lot about rivers today and water, I think, perhaps something we ought to add in, that in terms of the strategic regeneration framework that we've developed for the Etihad campus and the Lower Medlock Valley, again, we have wonderful water assets there. The Medlock itself, there are two canals that go through the area, the Ashton Canal and the Rochdale Canal. And again, we intend to use those assets to create, actually, the sorts of neighbourhoods that people do want to live and work in.
Okay. We spent, EG ran a number of sessions yesterday with different UK cities, talking about the components that make cities strong with, with various leaders. Joanne was there from, from Manchester, and we had Birmingham, Leeds, Sheffield, Belfast and others. And we talked about culture and urban regeneration and football cropped up there. We talked about talent and skills and people and the role that universities played. We also talked a lot about tech and innovation, and is that going to be a component of the future of this campus as well?
Well, innovation is a component of everything. I mean, we spend all of every day saying, "There must be something we're missing, because this looks like what we had before." So everybody is really focused on the elusive concept of innovation. I think tech has a definite role in what we're doing. I mean, even the way Pep manages the football team, there's a, there's a whole different way of communicating, and, and technology is definitely a part of it, the way we teach people, the way people learn, all those things are different. So tech is going to be embedded in the decisions that we make, whether we're going to have an, quote, "innovation lab," I don't know. The answer is, they may be better closer to the city than the Etihad campus, but we're very open to sort of developing the blocks that we're building as we see what the first layer is. So we know we have a number of the national institutes of sport coming, we know we have the university coming, we know we have some leisure that we're talking about, and so we're going to see what's necessary to fill it. We have 200 acres, so there's a lot we can do, and we're not going to, again, we're not going to be confined by the fact that the idea doesn't belong there, because maybe we didn't think about it correctly. I mean, I could see, I know the guys that we work very well, and actually, I brought them to Manchester the first time they came. And I can see us using that kind of concept maybe in the world of sport, maybe in the business of sport. So we're, you know, we're sort of making our way carefully.
Okay. We talk about fintech and prop tech a lot. Is sport tech a thing? Might that, might there be a home for that?
You might have just-
If it's not, I'm sure it will be within-
You should write about it, maybe it'll be.
We will. Okay. Are there any questions from the audience? Just at the front, microphone will find you if you raise your hand.
Hiya. I think it's quite obvious that a number of other cities will be looking at the Manchester model for sports-led regeneration, considering the success that we've had in Manchester. Are there any lessons learned, or perhaps anything you think you could do better, were you to do it again?
Marty, do you want to say?
No, I think Sir Richard should answer that first, while I think about it. No, I think Sir Richard should answer that first while I think about it.
Look, I'm going to go back to, I suppose, what kicked off in reality, sports development at the Etihad Campus and Eastlands, which was the Commonwealth Games. And we spent a lot of time looking at major sporting events around the world before we put on the Commonwealth Games. And we only found one place in the world that had got long-term benefit from hosting an event of that sort, which was happened to be Barcelona. Nowhere else had managed to get long-term benefit. And what we worked out is that two weeks of sport on its own doesn't give you the benefit. What you have to do is you have to build it into a long-term plan. So in terms of simply using the Commonwealth Games, we started seven years before. We started running regular sporting activities seven years before. I shan't go into the totality of the legacy plan, but in terms of sport alone, we're now, what, sixteen years after the Commonwealth Games, and we are still running every year series of national, international sporting events that are part of the legacy of using the Commonwealth Games. Every venue that was built, we had an after-use plan. There were no white elephants, simple rule about what we did. And they're all actually, if anything, overused. And the velodrome is booked up solid, almost twenty-four hours a day in terms of usage. And that's the lesson about sport. Manchester City, well, they have, what, probably about, depending on the length of cup runs, probably about thirty home games max a season. Again, thirty, that's bring visitors thirty times a year, a lot of them, but that's not a regeneration plan in itself. It has to fit into an overall context, an overall long-term context of how you develop the area. And that's what we've done with sport within East Manchester. We've made sure it is part of a broader, long-term regeneration framework, not a series of isolated events.
Right. I think the lesson that I would urge is, when you're pumped up and excited and you have all these wonderful plans in front of you, it's very easy to get seduced by the first idea. And you really can't, particularly because, once you commit a portion of a city area to a pathway, very hard to pull back. So we spent, we spent probably too much time thinking about it. I mean, Howard used to think I was crazy. I kept having these think tanks, and he said, you know, "We're starting to say the same thing again." And I said, "Well, we'll just keep saying the same thing until it really works." But I think these projects take more thought than cities tend to give them. And I think one of the things I've learned from Howard and Richard is, the whole process of creating a framework, a regeneration framework, allows the city to plan in a very far-sided way and also assess the implications of what happens in Eastlands on what's happening in the rest of the area.
And is it something that Sheikh Mansour is looking to replicate elsewhere? Does he see an opportunity to do it?
Well, we'd have to ask him, but I would say that we are, we're, Abu Dhabi United Group is very loyal, very focused on Manchester. We think there's more to do there. It would be, take something unusual for our group to decide to do something like that somewhere else. We do own a number of football teams. And in those communities, we have teams in New York, Melbourne, Yokohama, Torquay, Uruguay, and Girona in Spain. And so in those communities, we would be not quite as expansive, but we would be open to looking, but as...
Were there less good meals that you went for in those cities?
I have never found an experience like I had with these two.
Yeah. I think we underappreciate what we have out of the Etihad Campus. And if we're looking at the, well, we are, we're looking at the seven-thousand-seater stadium there. But just at the back of there, there is a global business based here in East Manchester. Global business, there's several hundred people employed in that building that aren't coaches and so on. They're part of Running City Football Group. And twenty years ago, we would not have imagined we would have had a global business of this sort in East Manchester. We wouldn't have imagined that we're having a university campus being built in East Manchester either. So some of this is really what Marty's talking about. You keep working away, and you keep working away, and you make things happen, but they're not always the things you necessarily expected when you first started on the journey.
Just an admission, ten years ago, I didn't know what relegation was.
And you still don't.
No, I know what it is. I don't want to experience it, that's all. So everybody can learn.
And it takes a long time to prepare for something like the Commonwealth Games. Have Birmingham been in touch, looking for advice?
Yeah. Well, actually, before that, we spent a lot of time working with Glasgow. And in particular, we had one of our senior staff working as part of the legacy team within Glasgow, so to make sure that they could learn the lessons from the Manchester experience. Because now, there are two places in the world that have got long-term benefits from a major sporting event. That's Barcelona and Manchester. And we want Glasgow to get that benefit as well, and we want Birmingham to get the benefit.
OK, thank you. Is there another question?
This many smart, this many smart people and no questions? Wow.
I have more, don't worry.
OK.
So, no one out there? I wonder what you're looking for from this group of people, from developers, from advisors, from operators, from others? What do you need now?
So, you know, in the world that I grew up in, everybody in the real estate business was relentlessly competitive with everybody else. And we kept our secrets, except to the extent we needed a planning approval, and you had to tell the world enough of what you were doing to get the approval. But that model really is not healthy for a city. And I've, over my years in Manchester, I've come to the conclusion that developers can be competitive, but they need to collaborate about what they're doing, because otherwise, every building's going to have a cleaners, and every building's going to have a coffee shop. And you're not going to really develop a coherent community, because you're going to have small businesses that start up with enthusiasm and end up in bankruptcy. So the collaborative planning in the private sector has to change. And so we're trying to do that at Manchester Life. We're trying to do that at the stadium, because ultimately, everybody's going to be more successful if there's a certain amount of coherence and collaboration in the competitive set. So we look for ideas everywhere. There's no monopoly, as far as we're concerned, about who has a good idea. If there's a good idea, we're going to use it. And if someone wants to use our good ideas, that's fine, too. So I think, I think what the dramatic, what the industrial revolution of technology has done for all of us is that there's no data that's private, there's no idea that's private. We should get used to it and actually start to use it as a force, you know, for positive movement as opposed to a danger.
OK. And Sir Richard, are there conversations that you want to be having for your ambition for the area?
Look, I think what I'm going to say about this is going to be shared very broadly within the Manchester delegation here at MIPIM. And we want other people to come and join it, who share our sort of view of the world and our values. But it's this, we don't want people coming into East Manchester where it's just another job. It could be another job anywhere in the world. We want people to come into East Manchester who feel that they have some ownership of the place, some sense of responsibility for the place, who want to work, as Marty's just described, who work in partnership with us. So that when whatever's done, we want things that are going to last, that are sustainable for the long term. Those, what we want out of the entirety of the development world, and there are lots of Manchester partners who do share that view of the world, they're the people we want to work with. They're the people we want coming into East Manchester.
OK. And Marty, does it feel like the sort of project that will, one day, you'll sit back and say, "It's finished"?
I'm seventy-six, so, you know, I hope so. No, I mean, you know, it'll be finished when everything we can think of today is done, and then we've got to start thinking about what's next. I mean, you know, when, I remember when Sheikh Mansour first asked me to be on the board, and I said, you know, he said, "You know about football." And I said, "Different kind." And he said, "Well, you know, we're doing this now. I have no idea what's going to happen with it, but I have a vision that I want it to be more than it is. And, you know, your job and Haldun's job is to go figure it out." And I think we still feel that way today. We've been successful in some things, and we haven't figured out what we're going to do in other things, and we're just going to keep doing it. So I don't know if it gets finished. And maybe the true answer, and it's really a life lesson, is if you think you're finished, you're done. And no one wants to be done.
Cities are never...
There's no bit of paper in the bottom drawer of your desk.
Cities are never finished. I like to think about the city as if it's organic, it's something that's growing. And it's either growing, or it's decaying, or it's a combination of both. Most of the time, it's a combination of both. What you need to do is to make sure that the growth bit is doing better than the decay bit as you're going forward. But this, whenever we finish something, and you'll finish an individual project, it's, as they say in West Wing, it's always, "What's next?" And there is always a "what's next," always a "what's next." And the city has to always be looking for that "what's next." You need to continue growing.
It's kind of like sports, right? You finish a season, but all you're doing is preparing for the next one. And you've got to start over again.
Yeah. And clearly, Manchester's had a few successful years, not just in football, but last year's success is no guarantee of next year's success. You have to keep working at it.
OK. Plenty of inspiring notes to end on there. Thank you all for coming. I was particularly struck by something that Marty said, that projects take more thought than cities tend to think. I think you could probably say, "Projects take more thought than developers tend to think, architects, anyone in this room and beyond." But thank you all for coming, and please do thank Marty and Sir Richard.